All right, so let us begin. Thank you all for coming. Wanted to make sure that we got some logistic things out of the way. The closest restroom here is right behind me, the two double doors, those of you that know this hotel. And you go through the two double doors, you head down that way, and there's the restrooms. And of course, that's at least at the loading dock. And of course, down at the other south end, which is farther, there's another restroom over there. So, we would like to have you guys, make sure you put your phones in silent mode. If you do need to talk, please step out of the room. This meeting is being recorded. And one of the things is, of course, please sign in. We need you to sign in, and we need you to speak through the mic as well. Okay, once again, we need you to speak through the mic, the microphone. So, again, so welcome, and I'll give it back to, I mean, give it to Nusima to give a few words in our Charrarafalauaish language.
Tiro, me faishon alihami, ngan Sima Urmeluk Udine. Iloihila, bue i boshe lihami. Me shakal, shal Noah Fisheries rel kapsa Rofalauaish memerkanu. Olomai rel yami totohila lebongi.
So, once again, welcome. Welcome to the Noah Fisheries informational meeting and public hearing for the proposed critical habitat. This entire meeting is being recorded and transcribed, and the transcript will be available on the Noah Fisheries website. Please keep in mind that anything you provide orally or in writing will be included in the administrative record. Here, here is our agenda for tonight, for those of you. We will start with the presentation about the proposed coral critical habitat designation for the U.S. Pacific Islands focusing on the CNMI part of the rule. Then we will take questions from the audience. And then at 7:00 P.M., we will begin the public hearing where you have the opportunity to provide your comments for the record. Then, the Noah Fisheries wants to hear from everyone who has questions about the proposal or wants to provide a comment. So we will be using the following guidelines today. One, first, please be mindful for the length of your questions and comments, so that everyone who wants to speak has the opportunity to do so today. And before I continue on to the next page, I would like to translate that for you. So... Sisus ma sinamal matamze pago na poengi, patadiskuti pago se poriyotso tasi, danin efekta shana logar gini gezmaranas, danipoma logi pacifico. Gistina meeting, simpi ta tutun nuwa presentation, nipofangwentusei tau tau tai besita gini na Noah Fisheries, edepomantin guiyan shea dan gaga tasi. An munadzen simpi amal ma faisin amze kustona. Gini neno simpi amanin epi, pesgi ala seti meria gepo poengi. Mana pora i kustona, monogatogi zipui publico nipofan manai komete. Para todu gi za hamzo, simpi todu sti mana hollung gi zuneara. So... So o'tru nu nai tempo i publico loki ipoma lo ni mangai gi gini. Debi nai munga mana gofamman amze mangwentus loki no, debi tanai ipoma lo tau tau dofangwentus loki. Mapo estegi gerasala tsotsu. So, eno na na hora ma bestiitani ma sangani publico?
Okay, pos alangal meta si buai ra teihila, ngan me alangal meta si buai shitiu, ngan bulolaliyara record Noah, ngan palolaliyara website Noah. Ngan iyaliyara titilap lebongi. Si buetutun rel yara rongrongal tolap, rel wash, yara halorrel setil Marianas. Takshah ngan maloblelet tutun yami ayeh. Ngaratak ya hal yami ayeh, rel Q&amp;A. Ngan rela 7 o'clock si ble tutun yash public hearing. Ihila liyamaloble tetekapas, ngan balmilalmo palolal record. Ngan ngerayor yami ayeh ihila. Rela wewel washiel, ngalira shala Noah. Ilalmeta reloihila, buerumusharu buarongrong yami kapas. Ngaratoto buai aobleki tetekapas, au abua falihachu ora me faisileleil, yam kapas buapaliorakashi rumusharu palteteh, pal apisata metay, metayarumusharu palapesate. Ngan ihila si bua warfish loliashu fingel lebongi. Me si bua pesate meta, umalo bapsate metayeti pom. Ngan lo usobialingowal metayangowal kapas ngalira shakal. Me balopalanglihami buai alangal yami kapas ihila palowaliyara record Noah me yaro website.
Also, second, be respectful for the others and their viewpoints. Respetai publico ni mangwentus dania fei malagunia. Ti todi loki mandinanzi guana benisi nyaman lahtsi lo tafanarespetanapoiengi. Imi na tres, please refrain from using profanity. Munga maltsafenu, tenasarunona plus in palabra. Utuguanaguisenintinizu maipi danisitain sangan uzu. While very with passion is welcome your questions and comments, please provide the appropriate language as well. So, once again, speak appropriately. Fangwentus mauli, usai maipi dan fangwentus gitubu. Also, please remember that your public comments will be recorded and transcribed, and the transcript will be available at the Noah Fisheries website. So talumbrai, marikokoto dofan sangen matutugi papa pare dokumentun Noah, edepomentun guiyan pare gaga tasi shea. So at this time, I would like now to call our Noah Fisheries staff to introduce themselves. While we wait for this technical difficulty, I just want to recognize Congressman Vince Aldon over there and Congresswoman Yang Tamai, as well as Congresswoman Flores. Thank you guys for coming. I appreciate also our other individuals from the 500 cells, as well as Humanities Council as well, Mr. Leo Pengalinen, and all the numerous fishermen out there that I see in the crowd. Thank you all for coming, and of course, our agency reps, as well as Mr. Dave Carrera from the Talaza Club as well, and Mr. Ray Tebbit in the back, and Mr. Ray Yumo as well, and Mr. Joe Komatsu. Thank you, Joe, for coming.
Okay, ihila shal Noah Fisheries reble tetehai ra teiter.
Hafadeh, tiro and faisho, everyone. My name is Chelsea Young, and I'm here with Noah Fisheries Pacific Islands Regional Office. I'm based in Honolulu, Hawaii, in our Protected Resources Division. I know that's a lot of words. And I am the chief of our Conservation Planning and Rulemaking Branch, where we do all of our actions that are regulatory under the Endangered Species Act, including listings under the ESA, critical habitat designations, and recovery planning.
Hi, I'm Ron Dean. I work with Chelsea in the same division. I am the chief of the Interagency Cooperation Branch, and our team works with other federal agencies on any actions that they authorize Funder carry out that may affect endangered species or designated critical habitat.
Hafadeh, my name is Krista Graham, and I'm a biologist with the Noah Fisheries Protected Resources Division located in Honolulu, Hawaii. Thank you all for coming.
So with that said, I would like to now call on Chelsea Young, who will now provide a summary of the proposed critical habitat.
Thank you Floyd and Nusima for being our emcees tonight. We really appreciate it. First and foremost, welcome everyone to this informational meeting and public hearing on Noah Fisheries' proposed critical habitat designation for our protected coral species. And sincerely thank you all for being here tonight and taking time out of your busy lives and schedules. I'm sure for most of you, this isn't exactly the most ideal way you like to spend your free time. So we really appreciate you being here. We highly value your input and feedback. That's exactly why we're here tonight. We want to hear from all of you on this action. I'm going to give a pretty short and sweet presentation to summarize this proposed designation so that we have plenty of time for question and answers, and of course, our public comment period later this evening. Many of you may know or be aware that in 2014, we listed 15 Indo-Pacific reef-building coral species as threatened under the Endangered Species Act for a number of reasons. They are, they have a number of threats. Primarily, climate change and ocean warming are affecting these species. And anytime we list a species under the Endangered Species Act, this triggers a number of different requirements that we have to undertake. And one of those includes identifying specific areas and essential features for these corals, which we have to designate as what we call "critical habitat." We took a first crack at this in 2020. A little over three years ago, we proposed critical habitat for the seven listed corals that we thought at the time occurred within the U.S. Pacific Island jurisdictions. And we proposed these critical habitat around 17 islands for what was in that rule, very broad swaths of near-shore areas. But based on the public comment period for that initial rulemaking, which was very long and extensive, we extended this public comment period three different times. So we went from a 60-day comment period to 180 days, which is very unique for our agency. But we received so much new substantive information, data, and records of these corals that we basically had to go back to the drawing board. So what we're here tonight to let you know is that we've actually withdrawn that 2020 rule. We've revised it, and we are now replacing it with this rule that we'll be discussing tonight, which was published just this past year in November. So this new rule proposes critical habitat for just five of our listed corals, around 16 island units. And what you'll see in the difference when I show you the maps later on is that this new designation is for very narrow strips of specific near-shore areas. Where we are currently at is the 90-day public comment period for the new proposed rule, which is open through the end of February. So that's February 28th. I will note it is a leap year this year, so it's not the 29th. And during this time, we are holding a number of in-person public hearings. This is our second one. We were on Guam on Tuesday. Make sure I'm keeping my days straight. It's a little different from Honolulu. So we were on Guam on Tuesday. We're going to be going to Tinian and Rota next week to hold public hearings there, based on feedback that we got the last time we were out here. And then we also have a team that's currently down in American Samoa doing the same thing, holding a number of public hearings. If for any reason folks are not able to come out in person, there'll be another opportunity to provide public comment and testimony at a virtual public hearing on February 7th. Based on the records that we have, and we've compiled over many years now, we have five listed corals that occur within the U.S. Pacific Island jurisdiction or in U.S. waters. And these corals are listed up here on the screen. These are the five corals that we are proposing critical habitat for. Only one of these species has been confirmed to occupy the waters of the Marianas, and that is Acropora globus ups. It's this one up in the upper left-hand corner. We also have a couple of other Acropora species. There's Acropora speciosa in the upper right, Acropora retusa in the lower left, Isopara crateriformis on the lower right, and Euphilia paradevisa in the center. Now, the way that we determine which islands to include in proposed critical habitat is essentially to determine their distribution or their range. And so I'm going to go through the distribution of each of these corals throughout the Pacific Islands, so you can see it on a map. Starting with Acropora globus ups, so as I mentioned, this is the only one that occurs on Saipan and the rest of the Northern Mariana Islands archipelago. It's by far the most broadly distributed coral species that we have, occurring on 18 different islands. So we have it broadly distributed throughout Guam and Northern Marianas. It's also broadly distributed through American Samoa. It occurs in the Pacific Remote Island area on Wake Island and Johnston and Palmyra Atolls. And new to this rule, we've actually confirmed its presence in the Papahana Makua Kea Marine National Monument in the northwestern Hawaiian Islands. As we move through the rest of the species, you'll see that the distribution narrows quite significantly. Acropora retusa only occurs on four islands, three of which are in American Samoa, one on Wake Island. Acropora speciosa only occurs on one island in American Samoa, in Tutuila. The same for Euphilia paradevisa, only on Tutuila in American Samoa. And finally, Isopara crateriformis, which occurs on three islands in American Samoa. So that leaves us with 18 island jurisdictions that we were considering for proposing critical habitat. But two of those islands occur solely within Department of Defense Integrated Natural Resource Management Plan areas, which means that these islands are subject to these, what we call "in-ramps." And when we conclude that these in-ramps are likely to benefit the coral's habitat, they then become ineligible for designation, and so we've had to X those off the map. So that is Wake Island in the Pacific Remote Island areas. And in CNMI, this is Farallon de Medenia. So that leaves us with 16 island units across the U.S. Pacific Island jurisdiction. Saipan is one of those 16 islands. We have seven others in the Mariana archipelago that we are proposing critical habitat in, also one in Guam. We have in Johnston Atoll and Palmyra Atoll, four islands in American Samoa, and then of course, the one in the northwestern Hawaiian Islands. So before I zoom in and present what we're proposing for designation here on Saipan, I wanted to go over just a little bit more information about what critical habitat actually is under the Endangered Species Act, and probably more importantly, what it isn't. And this is the same infographic that we have on that poster in the back of the room there. And it goes through the who, what, where, why, and how of critical habitat under the Endangered Species Act. And I'm going to start with the what on the left. So critical habitat are those specific areas on which are found essential features that are necessary for conserving and recovering listed species. So all species need habitat on which to live, reproduce, eat, grow, and thrive. And so these are areas that we are designating under this regulatory requirement. What critical habitat isn't, and this is really important, is it does not come with any restrictions to access for the general public. So critical habitat does not set up any kind of a park, a marine-protected area, sanctuary, monument, closed area, restricted-use area, any terminology you can think of that would come with restrictions to the general public. This does not do that. This is simply a boundary that we do in our regulations to alert the other federal agencies, the U.S. federal government, that this habitat is essential for the species, and they need to do their due diligence to make sure that their actions are not going to negatively impact that species or its habitat. So that brings me to the who is affected by critical habitat. And critical habitat is designed for other federal agencies. It's a requirement, as I mentioned, for them to do their due diligence to ensure they're minimizing their impacts to this habitat and the species. So with federal actions, our federal agencies that are carrying out, authorizing, or funding any activities, they have a requirement to come consult with us to make sure that we're minimizing those impacts. And this is how we work with our federal partners to do that. Now, having said that, we've heard a lot from you all in previous meetings and on other islands and in American Samoa that many of your projects, whether it's coastal development or coastal construction and things of that nature, do come with a lot of federal funding and aid that would trigger this, what we call "federal nexus" or connection to this critical habitat. So it's then on that federal action agency still to come to us to consult, not the individual person that's seeking out that permit. Where, so just to reiterate, we have this infographic showing that you can fish, dive, swim, snorkel, boat, any recreational activity, you can do that in critical habitat areas with no restrictions. Where we designate critical habitat is anywhere within the United States and its territories. We do this through a public process. Getting a little feedback. We do this through a public process based on the best available scientific information. And critical habitat is one of the few regulatory actions that we consider economic and national security impacts. And of course, with any regulatory action, we always go out for public comment and input on the process. And why we designate critical habitat finally is because this is necessary to support recovery of these species. And for corals, the essential features that we're trying to protect here are suitable hard consolidated substrate for the corals to reproduce and recruit to make baby corals and grow big, beautiful coral reefs, and then also suitable water quality for them to be able to get adequate sunlight. Okay, so I'm sure this is the part that you guys are most interested in, is the map. So this is the map of Saipan and the proposed designation for critical habitat. And this, as I mentioned, is only for the one species that is found here, which is Acropora globus ups. And it's restricted to its preferred depth range in Saipan, which is 0 to 12 meters or about 39 feet. So what you're seeing here, the designation is actually in those very narrow strips of blue area. Anywhere else is not included in the designation. And what you'll see is that many areas very close to shore are not included because those areas mainly contain reef flats and lagoon habitat, which do not provide good habitat for the species. And by good habitat, I mean it doesn't provide the consolidated substrate or the good water quality that we're looking for. For example, reef flats are extremely shallow, so they're subject to very extreme fluctuations in water quality. So it can be very turbid and murky, and the corals don't like that habitat. And then for lagoon habitat, it's mainly silty sandy substrate, so corals can't grow there or recruit there. So we're left with very narrow bands of fringing reef around Saipan in areas where we have those good habitat qualities. So as I mentioned, this is a new proposed rule. So if we compare this designation in the blue on the right to what we had previously in the 2020 rule, you'll see that it's a much less significant designation. And again, this is because we're only designating areas within the preferred depth range of the species of 0 to 12 meters and only where we find both that suitable substrate and water quality. So you can see, we no longer are including the Garapan Bank on the west side, and a lot of those areas have been minimized to very near-shore specific areas. We're also proposing to designate critical habitat on seven other islands within the Marianas. And we have a couple of those maps up in the room too. We have Tinian, Aguihan, Rota, Pagan, Alamagan, the Mog Islands, and Euracus. And the essential feature is the same across the islands. Okay, so that takes care of my summary of what we're designating, or what we're proposing to designate. And just a reminder, we're in that 90-day public comment period right now. It will be open through February 28th. So you have many weeks still to provide written comments if you like. You can also come up and provide public testimony during the public comment period tonight, which we highly encourage you all to do. That's why we're here, is to hear from you all. And you can also, oops, sorry. We have those comment cards up at the front that if you want to write down a comment and give it to us at the end of the night, we'll take them with us. And at this link, which I think is on those info sheets as well, you can find all of the relevant background documents, including the actual proposed rule, the supporting documents, which I actually think are more informative, and the maps, which can be downloaded from the link that's provided here. Okay, so thank you for taking the time to listen to that summary. I'm going to hand it back over to Floyd to start our Q&amp;A session. I have my contact information up here, and I also have our lead technical biologist for this rulemaking. He's actually down in American Samoa at the moment, Lance Smith. So if you have questions that you think of later on and you want to reach out to us, please take down our contact info. And then also, please make sure to get your questions out now because once we move into that formal public comment period, we move into this very prescriptive process where we have to sit awkwardly up here and not respond and just listen. So we'd like to make sure that we answer everybody's questions and have that dialogue before we move into that process. So thank you very much, and I'm going to hand it back over to Floyd.
Just a little housekeeping. I'll stand back a little bit. Again, thank you all for coming. I know that we're getting tight in here. There are some seats up here in the front as well, and some were some seats in the meadow. So you guys can have a seat, in other words, instead of them bringing in more chairs. However, we did have an overwhelming number today. We have 50-plus people that we have to even write in the back. Excellent, great turnout, thank you all. So, the, we are now going to begin the question and answer portion of this meeting. This question and answer portion will last approximately 7:00 P.M. given date. When we will start the formal public hearing, please note that we will not answer any questions during the public hearing. We will only accept your testimony. So please ask your questions at this time. Please keep your questions related to the proposed critical habitat designation and rulemaking process. Please also let us know if you would like to provide your questions in Chamor or Carolinian, and we will provide translation. So I will translate, then Nusima will come up. So pago na momentu ta tutuni kustona, lanin epi. Hamzuni mapostegi simpi gi ala seti meria. Lo istina programa pago istegi nipofaisene kustongo. Komu matutuni public meeting, i public hearing nipofamat para todu, ti sheyama namamai fuzan amze kustona talo. Lo debi bifaisin amze loki na komu matutuni zina guaha loki uramuni pungwentus.
Ihila si ble tutun Q&amp;A sessioniel. Nyalal Q&amp;A sessioniel, ngan maloble tetek apisate metayeti pom wal microphone. Me metayao ba eh. Metayamushalu buai hir shakal shal Noah. Rubalopilihami estei 7 o'clock. Ngaratoto 7 o'clock P.M., esamalo buai ayeh meta. Bu ilal tutunal public hearing. Lala public hearing, me leru wastilingaisha yam kapas, ngere sobopilihami. Pos ngerayor yam ayeh ihila, ihila ngan maloble ayhir inamo meta utetewala microphonei aloiham. Ngan awa ngalii, ngarumushal kapas derufalauaish buangan me lebu shelihami rel kapsalamerkanu.
All right, so for those of you that have questions, you may come up or please state your name, spell it out if need be, and you can ask your questions. Any questions? Mr. Rahabe.
My name is Ramun Rahbe. My question is with respect to the establishment of the critical habitat. Earlier, you showed in the slide a proposed, a proposal that was much more extensive. And I was wondering, the reason why you reduced it was because of cost? Or what was the reason for getting it reduced? And also now, since it's reduced, how are you going, how are you going to help the community protect it? Since the issues that will be affecting it are, you mentioned climate change and other issues that we don't have control over. But we have control over other activities that we would do to minimize impact on that proposed area. And I'm just wondering if there would be assistance to the community to help protect that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you for that question, and they're both very good ones. So I will answer your first question first. The, I'm just looking at the feedback. Can we turn that one off? We're trying. Got it? Okay. So your first question had to do with why the reduction in the designation, because it was much more extensive in the 2020 rule. There were a few reasons for that. So based on new information that we got, namely information on the records of where these corals occur, in the original rule, we actually had two more species that were considered in Saipan's waters and in the Marianas. And based on reviewing all of the information and getting feedback from our territorial resource agency partners and looking at those records, we actually decided that there was not adequate evidence that those species actually occurred here. So we can't include them in critical habitat. And so one of those species had a depth range of 40 meters, and when we took that species out, the depth range was significantly reduced to only this 12 meters that Acropora globus ups has. And the other reason was because we're now only designating areas that have the combination of the substrate and the water quality. So before, we might have had areas of soft substrate that didn't actually provide that essential feature that's needed for this coral. So for those, those are the two main reasons why the designation became much more narrow to just those fringing reefs that provide both the water quality and the substrate that's needed for this particular species. To your second question, which I think is getting at, how we can protect these corals in this habitat, given there are much larger threats like climate change that we don't have control over? And what I would say is that, you know, and we do work with folks here in the territories, we do provide grants and things like that to help with research and things that are going on in the field to try and protect these corals and their habitat. What we would say is that there are a number of localized threats to these corals as well, such as runoff and contaminants and sedimentation and things of that nature, that this designation will at least help to reduce the impact of our, of the federal actions that are happening that might have caused some of those things. So we're trying to reduce those activities as much as possible to help build in resilience, you know? So coral reefs and corals, if they're going to withstand or be able to have time to adapt to these threats related to climate change, we have to do everything we can on the ground to minimize those localized threats so that we can build in more resilience. And certainly, we want to have as much partnership with folks out here and in other U.S. jurisdictions that we can work with together on that. I hope that answered your questions.
My name is Leo Pangalina, and my question is, can you give some examples, maybe based on your collective experience with the federal government, of the types of federal action or uses in Pacific Island waters whereby this protection would help, where this designation would help protect the coral or whatever is designated as endangered?
Well, actually, the vast majority of actions in this, in the CNMI, that would require consultation are U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permits. And we got ahead of the game recently when the listing was originally proposed in 2020. And we can, on the Nationwide Permit Program, and we consulted on that whole permit program rather than having to do each consultation individually, so that now, when an applicant wants to put something in the water, put in a dock or any kind of fill in waters of the U.S., we have a mechanism so that we've already consulted on it, and they, the Army Corps can send us a notice of intent, and we can say, yes, this is covered. So it's not a full-blown consultation, it's an email that takes two days to do. But because that original proposal was in 2020, we did what was called a conference opinion. So we already considered the proposal in 2020, so that all of the consultations that have occurred since then already incorporate the proposed critical habitat. And since the actual, the new proposal is even less, we don't have to modify that so that we can easily incorporate that into any future consultations, so that we don't expect any additional administrative need or administrative costs, and those consultations can go forward without any holdup or holds or any modifications that we hadn't already considered. If that answers your question. Oh, yeah, so the Army Corps has a list of best management practices that we work with them to develop whereby they modify their actions ahead of time so that these critical habitat essential features are not affected, so that we can fit them into that consultation. So they proactively modify their actions ahead of time so that we don't have to ask them to do it after the fact, so that they, that the actions don't cause adverse effects to the projects. If that answers your question.
Yes, and also, I was hoping if you had, so I heard a dock could be a potential action or use in this area. Are there other types of actions that we could expect the federal government to have an interest in using this area and have to work with the agency to figure out how to modify perhaps their plans? You know, what types of plans could we expect the federal government to have that might impact this critical habitat?
So we did an analysis of the past 10 years, and the stuff that the Army Corps of Engineers covers in their Nationwide Permit are pretty much routine stuff, like seawalls, revetments, dock repairs, and we didn't identify anything that would have significantly changed had this designation occurred previously. And we didn't identify anything that would have caused a consultation just because of the designation of critical habitat, because when we look at these actions on an individual basis, anything that would affect the habitat of the individual corals that would affect them, we would have analyzed anyway. So we don't see any real significant administrative burden at all. So, but the Army Corps of Engineers Nationwide Permit Program covers pretty much any routine in-water activity that results in something being placed in the water.
And then we've also heard, there's, you know, some research projects, folks that want to put in nurseries for restoration purposes, and other folks that are doing aquaculture in water work. So again, those are generally, like Ron said, Army Corps Engineer permit. So that's mostly what we see in the Pacific Islands.
Is there any other questions? Please come. Question or comment? This is question and answer only.
Hi, my name is George Moses. I've been fishing in the lagoon for more than 40 years, and I've seen changes in our lagoon. And since 2014, you guys came up with this coral critical habitat. And then you proposed this, first time I ever see a critical endangered species. I don't understand what's that mean. I used to believe that any living things, that before they reach endangered species, they must go through three stages. One is seasoned, second protective, and if those don't work, then it becomes endangered. Now, these corals, are they endangered or critical endangered species? If they exist in Mog, Pagan, and the rest of the island, and then we put Saipan into that category where they can be thrive on those island, what's the price we going to pay? And I like to hear you say Engineer Corp. Engineer Corp is almost, to my experience, is a dead wish. It takes 10 years to get a permit from them. And you just put another threatened endangered species, coral species, into their list. That's going to cost us a lot. Every time we want to move forward, we'll take step back because of so much regulations by NOAA, Engineer Corp, and 10 years of studying of these endangered, critical endangered corals, they've been exist so many years. Why now? Thank you.
I think I heard a couple of questions in there that I can just provide a little bit of clarification for. So these corals are, so we have a very specific process under the Endangered Species Act. I know there's a number of organizations that have different classifications for, you know, threatened and endangered species. The International Union for the Conservation of Nature has a number of different classifications. We only have two under the ESA, and that is threatened and endangered. And these corals are threatened. So they, it means that they're likely to become in danger of extinction in the foreseeable future. And this is largely because of the worsening trends in climate change, the increasing ocean temperatures, ocean acidification, combined with a number of other localized threats. So they are, they're threatened, they're not at the most high level of endangered. And as I mentioned in the presentation, we were, well, I didn't mention this actually, some of the history of this is that we were petitioned to list these species by the Center for Biological Diversity. And we're required to respond to those petitions and look at them to see if they're warranted, if they're providing enough information. And then, once we do list them, based on just the science and the, you know, we don't take into account economics and national security or any of those other impacts, all we're looking at is biologically, is the species at risk of extinction, and if so, we list it. Then that triggers another, a bunch of other requirements under this law in particular that makes us designate critical habitat and do recovery planning and things like that. So, yeah, that's the why now, is because we got petitioned in 2009 for these species.
Yeah, and speaking to the consultations and the process holding up things for years, that does occur on the mainland and in other regions. But we did an analysis of the past 10 years, and the maximum days to complete a consultation for a formal consultation, which is the most complicated, is 66 days. The routine consultations that we do, the maximum days was 84, and the, over, like 95% of the consultations that we perform are programmatic implementations with that Army Corps of Engineers programmatic consultation that I mentioned, and that, those, the maximum days was, thank you, 25. The average days for those implementations, the 95% of those consultations that we do are two and a half days. So this, the, and we don't foresee this significantly changing that at all. So we do not foresee this ever holding up anything in any significant way, especially with the designation of the critical habitat and the, and the factors that we've looked at in that analysis. So we don't see this as a major or even a significant change.
All right, thank you. I saw Mr. Gene Weaver and Mr. Tudella and Ms. Sablon. So can I call up Gene, Mr. Tudella, then Ms. Sablon?
Good evening. My name is Gene Weaver. I'm a resident of Saipan. I'm looking at this chart on my right, there's a lot of color in it. How does that affect recreational and commercial fishing? Is that a no-take zone?
No. Great question. And I like to be able to answer this one because I know it's what a lot of people are concerned about, is whether or not this line on the map comes with any restrictions for that area, and it does not at all. It's not a marine-protected area, there's no restricted access, you're never going to see a sign up anywhere saying, you're in a critical habitat area, you can't fish here, or you can't dive here, or any of that. This is solely aimed at these federal actions that we're talking about. So with regard to commercial fisheries, we don't have any that I'm aware of that would have an impact on the bottom substrate, so, or the water quality. So there's nothing that we could foresee with commercial fishing. And we've done, well, Ron can speak to this more, if we've, if we've looked at them, I think in Hawaii we did, but no, there's no restricted access for these areas.
So with a proposed coral critical habitat, what are we trying to protect? Are we trying to protect it from natural disasters, natural events, which is bleaching and all that? Because I really don't see it happening, to be honest with you. I can see man-made pollution and all that, yeah, but, but if you're, if, these are being proposed, I think every coral in this world is a critical habitat from natural events. There's nothing you can do about it. That's my take on it, but, but thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Can I call up Mr. Herman Tudella, then after that, Ms. Sablon?
I think you answered one of my questions about the question.
Aaron, can you put your, closer to the mic, please?
I have a question. You mentioned twice, Army Corps of Engineers. I thought the, when we negotiated the Northern Marinos Marine Monument, I think the federal jurisdiction receded three miles out, so I'm looking at the, the whole thing is less than three miles. So can you explain that part? Will the Army Corps entering state waters? You mentioned twice the Army Corps, so I'm just curious.
Sorry, we're just having a hard time here with the air conditioning.
I mean, you mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers twice in regards to permitting and whatnot. I know for a fact that the Northern Marinos Marine Monument, which we had negotiated something about the submerged land, so we, we took back three miles and also the wet land. So the Army Corps has, is out of the state jurisdiction. So that's what I want here, you mentioned it twice, so.
Yeah, I can, I can try to answer that, I think, and I might have to get back to you, but the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over waters of the U.S.
Yes, but I am definite that the three miles receding jurisdictional, because like our state.
The state waters, yeah, they.
Piece of olive, right? When we want to establish like ways to put permanent markers so that, you know, when you enter a sanctuary, you definitely be within a sanctuary, but we have been having decades of public fight to prosecute because of the fact that there's no visible markers because the Army Corps restricted, the permitting process is so strict, so, but after they receded a few miles, including the wet land, which is based on the language of the the wetland, which is based on the language of the submerged land, took our inland wetland. But now it's receded three miles out. So that's where I just want to know if something happened or something changed, because you mentioned it twice.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I think that there, there may be some overlap with the, there was just a revised definition of waters of the United States that the Army Corps of Engineers had, and I don't want to speak to how that overlaps with the monuments. But I'm happy to follow up with you about it.
I see that group that opposed the Marine Monument.
Yeah, I might have to follow up with you. And I'll talk to you after the meeting, and we can touch base. Apologies.
We needed to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Tudela. Ms. Sablon?
Good evening. My name is Tina Sablon. I'm a resident of Saipan. And I have two questions. So the first, I am really glad to hear that the proposed critical habitat designation won't impact fishing rights or aquaculture or coral reef restoration projects underway. But I was wondering if you could walk us through how this could impact future expansions of our seaports, particularly on Saipan, Tinian, and Rhoda, expansions or improvements of the seaports. And then my second question has to do with the areas that have been deemed ineligible for critical habitat designation, and if the coral species of interest or the habitat features of interest are not in those ineligible areas? Or is that mostly a function of military activities in the military's interest? Thank you.
So any expansion of harbors or ports would require an Army Corps of Engineers permit. And a lot of that, some of those are covered by the Nationwide Permit Program that I discussed earlier. Expansion, probably not so much. But when such an activity is authorized, we would consult with the authorizing agency, the Corps of Engineers, and we were performing an analysis, not just on the critical habitat, but on all of the species as well. And, you know, is this going to affect turtles and other listed species? But we would do an analysis on the critical habitat to determine whether it was going to destroy or adversely modify that critical habitat. And the definition of destroy or adversely modify is, I had it up here a minute ago, means a direct or indirect altercation that appreciably diminishes the value of critical habitat as a whole for the conservation of a listed species. Now, the "as a whole" is the important part there. So putting in, expanding a dock is extremely unlikely to diminish the conservation value of the critical habitat as a whole, considering that the critical habitat is all, you know, you saw the maps and everything. So we would do that analysis, and the value of that analysis is that we would identify and quantify how much adverse effects there were, so that any future activities, we could take that into account to see how that affects the, those future actions. So it's unlikely that any such activity, you know, just hypothetically, would result in any adverse modification or destruction.
And to your second question about the ineligible area, so we have regulations, so the Endangered Species Act was amended by the Sykes Act, which basically requires that if an area is subject or under the control of an Integrated Natural Resource Management Plan by Department of Defense, and we do an analysis and determine that that management plan is likely to provide the same level of conservation benefit to that coral's habitat as we would under a Section 7 consultation that Ron just described. So looking at the, whether or not the corals would likely to have an adverse modification or destruction of their habitat, automatically those areas become ineligible under our codified regulations. So this is something that was done for, in collaboration with the, for the Department of Defense. So the areas in the crosshatched, it's not that they don't have habitat that's suitable for the species, they do. We have records of them there. We've been working really closely with the Navy to develop that coral conservation component. They've got a reef enhancement project, their own monitoring. They've got implementation reports that they've sent to us to let us know, yes, we are actually doing these things. We do have these ongoing projects. They are being proactive about it. So we made the determination that that, that in-ramp was going to benefit the corals to at least the degree that, and reduce the effects of their actions to the degree that we would have them under our consultation. So that's why they're ineligible.
Mr. Gary Sword, then Mr. Gurley.
Gary Sword, resident CNMI. Wanted to, who requested to put this on the endangered species list, or was this something that the science brought out? Number one. And number two, there seems to be a lot of habitat for this particular coral, right, all the way up to Maok. And Tanapek is one of our heavy areas where the local people fish. And number three is, why are we talking about this if we can swim there, we can boat there, we can fish there? What are we talking about over here? It's not closed, so what are we discussing? Thank you.
Yep. Great questions. So the first question you asked was, who brought this about to list these corals under the Endangered Species Act? And I would say 99% of the time, it's through a petition process. So we get petitions submitted, anybody in the United States, anyone, anywhere actually, can submit a petition to NOAA to list a species under the Endangered Species Act. When I say a petition, though, it's not a letter with a bunch of signatures on it. It's actually a very comprehensive biological report that provides evidence of why we should consider it and why this species needs protection. So in the case of these corals, we received a petition from the Center for Biological Diversity. They're a nonprofit, non-governmental organization that, you know, they want to protect these corals, and they petitioned us back in 2009 for 83 reef-building coral species. And we ended up with 15 in the Indo-Pacific based on that. I am trying to remember what the, I know what the third question was. What was your second question?
There's a lot of coral, there's a lot of fish in this world.
Yes.
And you're looking at this area that's a very heavy area of issues, indigenous issues.
Oh, yes. So, yeah, so like I said before, this designation doesn't have any impact on fishing rights whatsoever. It doesn't close, and that was to your third question, is why? What are we talking about, right? Because if it's not closed, what does it do? And basically, what we've been talking about for most of the evening is regulating the federal government. It's, it's actually to regulate ourselves and to regulate other action agencies. So it could be, I mean, for out here, it's mostly the Army Corps, but we've had other, you know, programs that we've had to consult with, and I, we can give you some examples.
Yeah, so we're not worried about private entities fishing and utilizing the resources so much as we're, those aren't our concerns. The concerns are federal ag, other federal agencies who do have the potential to adversely modify these areas as a whole. And hypothetically, something, an example would be like if the EPA were to authorize a chemical or a pesticide to be used that's toxic to these essential features. And that's not something that a private entity would do, but that's something that the federal government could do. Or Land Use Agency, USDA, or somebody could, or the Forest Service could authorize some land use issue that could cause runoff that could hurt these essential features. So that's, that's our concern. It's not the individual, the private entity. It's our, our colleagues in the federal government who have the actual power and potential to cause widespread problems that could, could adversely modify or destroy this critical habitat.
All right. Thank you. We have other people, I'm sorry, we have to move on. It is, it is 7 o'clock, but we'll allow a few more questions, probably three only. Mr. Gurley? I will call only three people. We've already reached the limit. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Gurley, and I had a question for you guys on a particular situation. I understand the CPA is going to be putting out an RFQ for doing some dredging of the entrance channel. And they're probably going to be taking off the high points along the entrance channel. And I asked earlier Kristin, she said that, you might know, but that blank area here, is that the Saipan entrance channel that is not included? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if we end up doing dredging out toward that part of the entrance channel, you're going to have turbidity impacts to the designated coral critical habitat. Now, would that be covered under the programmatic agreement that you currently have with the Corps of Engineers?
Any existing, any new damage to an essential feature would probably not be covered under that, I'm, I don't know the details, but I do not think that it would be covered under the existing programmatic. But it would be covered under a formal consultation where we would look at it and analyze it. And we have 135 days under the statute to complete that. And again, like I said earlier, I do not foresee that resulting in adverse modification as, or destruction as defined under the, you know, the regulations have a specific definition, and I don't foresee that being a, meeting that threshold. But we would do a consultation, and we don't foresee that being anything that would hold up the project, you know, past, past the normal regulatory process.
Are you distinguishing the potential impacts of projects, temporary impacts versus permanent? So temporary impacts would be caused by turbidity plumes. Permanent would be new dredging through critical habitat.
Right. So there's two, it gets, it gets complicated, and I've been doing this 20 years, and it confuses me. But there's two processes under the ESA for consultations. There's an informal process and the formal process. And I'm sure you're familiar with it, but for the sake of everyone else, the informal process is an action that may affect a species but is not adversely, not likely to adversely affect that species. So that would be a temporary, there's turbidity, we're in there doing stuff, but then it's going to go away and we move on. Then there's the likely to adversely affect, which is the formal process. It takes a little longer, but that's something that might cause actual adverse effects that are permanent. But again, we would evaluate that as a whole, and we would just quantify what those effects would be for future consultations and make recommendations to minimize those effects.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I call up Mr. Coleman? After Mr. Coleman, we'll have Mr. Aldon, then Richard, and that'll be it for tonight with questions.
Aloha, ahi ai. I just had a question regarding the manner in which baseline data was gathered, and what type of, you know, is it photochemistry, or what moving forward are you going to be doing to help monitor the condition on changes that may be occurring in these critical habitat areas? And is that information going to be readily available to the public so we can see, you know, with time, what kind of changes are occurring? Are there positive impacts or negative impacts? And what is the greatest threat to these coral critical habitat areas? What are we, like, what is the main thing we're trying to prevent from occurring? You know, I know mention of federal, federal agents or agencies are kind of the ones you guys are keep an eye on. But, yeah, that's probably.
Okay. I will start with your first question, which was what, what were the sources, use the data sources for identifying these areas? So we relied on a lot of different data streams from a number of different sources. So the first thing that we had to do was determine where the species is located on these islands. And so we have annual, actually not annual, there, every few years, our, our Science Center, Pacific Islands Fisheries Science Center, comes out and does island-wide surveys. So that was one source of information. We also got records from CNMI's Division of Coastal Resource Management, the Coral Reef Monitoring Program. So that was a local source of the data. And then for the water quality and information to help differentiate the areas where we have that essential feature, we used the, some data from our National Center for Coastal Ocean Science, also called NCOS, which is part of the NOAA agency. And then we also got substrate data and information from CNMI's Department of Land and Natural Resources. So we have a combined, you know, dataset from our own scientists at NOAA and then as well as the local resource agencies here in CNMI. Your next question. Oh, the available, yes. So, and, and looking at how this is impacting and what, so again, those surveys that we do every couple of years, they're, they're mainly looking at reef health. So that is put together in reports that are published on our Science Center's website so we can, you know, share that with you. And then I think your third question was whether or not, what was the largest threat to this critical habitat area, correct? I think, you know, anything that's going to alter the quality of the water, so corals are, they need clear, you know, water, like adequate sunlight, they photosynthesize to make their food. So we want to make sure that, you know, big runoff situations, we've got brown water in the water, land-based sources of pollution and contaminants, they, it's very costly to them energetically to deal with that, to clear that sediment off. And it also covers that substrate, so they can no longer recruit little baby coral polyps to that new substrate and to keep growing. So big, big events, like, you know, Ron mentioned, like a land clearing where you have all of this, you know, sediment going into the water, affecting both the substrate and the water quality, contaminants to that, and, yeah, for the habitat. I think those are the biggest things that we would look at in terms of our consultation process with the federal government. And basically, removal too. So if we had like a project that wanted to dredge a reef, you know, for example, and remove actual reef habitat, that would be a big one. But I don't think that happens very frequently. There's a lot of protections for corals, so. Does that answer your questions? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Aldon, Congressman Aldon, then Richard? Please, closer to the mic as well, so everybody can hear.
Good evening, and thank you for hosting this public hearing. So you said something along, earlier, that anybody, anybody can come to you and request a study to be done that could potentially impact our life here. So with your proposed coral habitat, you could have Joe in the middle of Kansas that has never seen the ocean, but he watched a lot of YouTube videos, can write to you and request that you come over here and conduct your business here. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not exactly. I can explain the process a little bit more. So, so the request wasn't for critical habitat. Basically, somebody can write to us and say, hey.
Who's that somebody?
Anybody. But here's the, here's the trigger. That petition, it has to have substantive information in it to make us say, this is worth our time, because it takes a lot of.
So where do they get the substance or their information? Do they come here and do their research here, and then they call you, and then you come over here?
No. They, it's basically a report that's based on publications, scientific literature, surveys, things like that.
From somebody that has never been here? From somebody that has never been here?
It could be, well, it's not necessarily just...
From Mars.
Here. These species occur across the Indo-Pacific. They could be, yeah, they could be from anywhere. Yes.
Right. The reason why I'm saying, I'm asking that question, because this is ours. Okay? I don't believe that anybody anymore should be coming here to our place and dictating to us what should be and what shouldn't be. It's bad enough that our, you know, federal government didn't allow us to take our EEZ, our full EEZ, because it was never discussed. But just because something was never discussed, that's not something that you say, we're going to take it away anyways because it was never discussed. It wasn't yours to take to begin with. You know, we have a hard time here, living in this island, trying to abide by federal law. I mean, imagine a family that's trying to build their house, but yet you have one bird that's messing up the whole process. So this family is living in a tent somewhere, and they want to build their house because, but they can't, because this migratory bird that is considered an endangered species by the federal government is telling our local government that, yes, you cannot break, you know, chop down that tree because the bird is there. Now, it seems like, you know, this is one of those step-one process where you're going to tell us that, yep, we're going to have this place as a critical habitat. And then two years from now, you're going to come around and tell us, yep, it's a critical habitat, it's an endangered species. And when is that going to stop? According to your CFR, "All methods and procedures which are necessary to bring any endangered species or threatened species to the point at which measures provide pursuant to the act are no longer necessary." When is that? We don't know, right? So if we don't know when it's going to end, what gives you guys the right to always come here and tell us what to do? For the past 400 years, it seems like we could never speak for ourselves. And I don't know about everybody else, but for me, for one, I'm tired. And I've worked for the federal government, and I know what it does. They say one thing, but then they do another. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Mr. Hofschneider, one question, please. Please, yeah, we're running out of time, so we need to switch over.
Well, Mr. Rossa, you know what? They're here for several days, I believe. They're going to be here, so, you know. My question is several questions, and I never see these people before, so don't limit me, don't be like the Les Litcher, the House of Representatives.
Please ask your question.
You know, thank you. Because that's a collective dictatorship, I call them. You limit somebody's First Amendment, Mr. Rossa. Anyway, half a day and good evening. I understand you guys from the National Marine Services or... Fisheries, right? You're part of NOAA, right? Yeah, it's a huge department, you know, the Department of Commerce. Just a background, I've lived in Washington, DC for three years in the Beltway. You know, I got educated there, you know, and I just want to make sure that... I was there when President Clinton was having affair Monica Lewinsky. You know, remember that time, right? So it was an interesting time. Anyway, you know, I just heard Congressman Aldon, and I decided whether or not to talk about Congressman Kilili, our delegate, for 14 years. You know why you're here? Because a couple years ago, I met with Congressman Kilili in Tinian specifically to talk about this, 200-mile EEZ. And we talk about authority. You know, you're here for, you're an authority of the US government, and we're all US citizens here. We signed the covenant in 1975, 1978. We had the first Constitutional Convention, signed by President Carter. He's 100 years now, you know, still alive. Hopefully, I'll see him one day and constitute a governor. But President Reagan, if you look at the covenant, Section 1009, I believe, or 106, he signed to end the United States Security Council trusteeship. And that's when the US government came in, and that's why you're here. And that's why I have a dilemma with the proposal. And I was born in Saipan, Dr. Torres Hospital, where the college is, but raised in Tinian all my life. I fish, I grew up in a fishing with a community, a farming community, you know. And when I look at Tinian, there's no blue there. Why is that? Yes?
Just wanted to let you finish. There's, on the southern part of the island, there's some, a little bit of blue down there.
Oh, just a little bit?
Yes.
Well, you know, that's my major concern, because the United States military, we made a covenant agreement under Section 801, all the way up to 806, I believe, and there's a technical agreement. And we fish, before the become a US Commonwealth, we fish all around. In fact, the northeastern, the northwest side, where they propose, the military proposed to create a new harbor, and we used to go fishing there. It's a traditional indigenous Chamorro. You know, the Chamoros are the only indigenous people here, and I don't know why others are claiming to be indigenous. And I want the US federal government to correct that, because we've lived here 3,500 years, 1,500 before Jesus Christ was born. You know, I'm Catholic, so I understood this. And that's why we have the Lattes Stone and everything. We are Marana Island, a capelago, that includes, that include our southern Maranas, which is Guahan, you know. And we're working on grassroots level to have a unification one day, because we've been colonized for 500, close to 400 some years. And your presence here, I hate to say it, but you're an incidence of colonialism, you know. And we're still, we're still struggling, you know. And the problem here is that in that proposed area in Naitzulu, on the western part of the island, is the best, there's a lot of clams. You go out there, and you want to eat, the fishermen's go out there. I go fishing every time. And it breaks my heart that the military, one of their proposals is to destroy that to create a harbor. So does your agency have any say in military actions, like up in Naus, in the federal states, Farallon de Mendeniza, where they bombed, you know? Because I understood there's 11-mile reef there. Do you have any say-so about, because I understand it's federal action, right? So how do you, what's your relationship with the US Department of Defense when they have actions to work on it?
Right, good, good question. So for the areas that you see in the crosshatching over there on Tinian that's been excluded, and for Farallon de Mendenza...
The island is called Naus, Chamorro, because that's, Naus is a bird.
Okay.
Here, the thousands of birds. In fact, history behind it, former Senator Hillary Clinton, she was a senior subcommittee, I mean, committee on the Senate, then the military came in because Earth Justice decided to stop the bombing in 2000, and Hillary Clinton went there and she decided to waive everything. Yes, sir?
Can you let them answer the question?
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No problem. So, yeah, we have a pretty close working relationship with the folks in the Navy that are responsible for developing a management plan or the Integrated Natural Resource Management Plan. We worked with them to help develop the coral conservation component of that, to make sure that they were doing their part in minimizing the military effects.
That's just very good, but my critical issue here is the dilemma that we have, because I'm a tototano, eh? You know, tototano is the people of the land. And in Chamorro, tanu means land, and tasi means ocean. So the land and the ocean are one, you know. And our problem here is that we are proposing for two years, we're going to set a gigaw, that's a traditional method of fishing. And I'm worried that, I'm very worried that all of these blue dots are going to prevent us from doing that. In fact, I just, for the first time, I met the Igso Mar there back there, the Dillaras Secretary, and hopefully you favorable to allow us, unfortunately, you know, he's not an indigenous person here, to send us, and I'm going to ask him to give us a permit to go there and build.
Mr. Hofschneider, thank you. Mr. Hofschneider, I need to stop because we've got to go to the public meeting now.
Yeah, I understand, but the gigaw, how can you reconcile...
Thank you, Hofschneider. Thank you, thank you.
The gigaw...
Thank you, we've got to move on to the next meeting.
Mr. Rossa, I just want...
Mr. Hofschneider, Mr. Hofschneider, we are on a timeframe here. We need to finish the meeting as well. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry, but we need to move on to the public here. Thank you so much.
The gigaw is very important. Chamoros, that's your conservation for thousands of years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hofschneider. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we will commence with our public hearing now. There are no more questions to be asked. You with your comment, and I'll read it out here. We have reached the end of the questions and answers session, and we will now move to the public hearing, during which we will accept the verbal public comments. If you signed up to provide verbal public comment today, we do have the list, by the way. I will call on your name, and you can use the microphone to make your public comment in three minutes. Make it clear to you, three minutes. We are going to time it, and we will stop you. We do have a few public comments that we need to address. If the time remaining, then we have gone through the sign-up list for public comments, we will open the floor for anyone who would like to offer a verbal comment today. Before giving you a testimony, please state your name and spell for the record. Please let us know if you're officially representing an organization. Please let us know if you would like to provide a comment in Chamor or Carolinian, and we will provide a translation. If you do not get the opportunity to provide the verbal comp, public comment today, you can also fill out the comment handout and return it to us at the end of the meeting. Written public comments can also be submitted electronically at regulations.gov. You may also mail your public comments to NOAA Fisheries. The website and the mailing addresses are available on the handout. The comment period will be, will be open through February 28, 2024. With that, we are going to get started with our first commenter, and however, I would like to have Nasima translate as well.
Okay, hilangnya sarlo yash. Q and A session, yes, seblat tutunli, public hearing session. The public hearing session, yel, nyamalubuteta, wa peseta, metayeburata. Rela rongrongolo wash. Nyarwa tetewa kapas, please sobu afeli ora, buey malup kapas shahrela, three minutes. Ahala buata kailo yam kapas, babalyora kashi, romshal rubal tetekapas. Nyarre alengar, shala tetera takailo yarkapas, nyabalyoro ora. Nyamalina moyo, malapal tetewa kapas. Oburate item, was peolilo, rela merkano. Nyarre yor yam terbahu, palirete ital yam terbahu. Angeli nyaromshal oburate, rela merkano. Nyamalipala sheli, sheliro rela yam kapas. Nyaratoto buey seblasarlo, nyousalmoteta, amalubushiti, umetayubushitul, lal comment cards ka elomwal yel, wal lamasa. Nyamalshahupal tetewa, regulations.gov website yel, ubsa mitli yam comment. Nyamalupal meoli ngalir, shal NOAA Fisheries, estaki February 28, rela yam comments.
Thank you, Nasima. With that, we are going to start with the first commenter, which is Mr. David Cabura. Please come up, if you're still here. I don't see David, I believe. Anybody see David back there? No? Okay, going once, going twice, next. For public comment, Mr. George Moses.
Hello again. My name is George Moses. This is my first time to attend this, so I am seeing something that is not being fair towards the island of Saipan, island of Tinian, and Mendeniza. If you look at Tinian, they are exempt. If you look at Mendeniza, they are exempt. I would politely ask that Saipan will be treated like Tinian and Mendeniza. Give us our space to promote our living without any restriction. The reason, why the Mendeniza was exempt? Why is Tinian, most part of Tinian has been exempt? Is it because the military? Are you, are you, are you putting the military as more important than the people of Saipan? Remove those red tapes around the island of Saipan. The corals will be there forever. And if you're going to blame the people of Saipan for climate changes, as a reason that they are being endangered, or critical endangered species, and then allow military to have that playing field, give us a break. Remove those blue line around the island of Saipan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Next, we have Mr. Ramon Rehebe. Rehebe, apologies.
Thank you. I spoke earlier, so I thought that would cover my comment and questions, but after listening to the discussion, after the last speaker on removing the blue line. I'm actually a marine biologist. I went to school in Guam. So I've dove all the islands in the Marinas, from Guam all the way to Uraquas, the northernmost islands. And the most common coral that I observed was this species. And it's, it inhabit the solid substrate. And so you dive on all the western side of the northern islands, which are mostly basalt rocks, that's mostly the coral you observe. And so you can see from your distribution list, in the Marinas, it's present, but as you move east to the Central Pacific, it disappears. This coral is also very common in Palau, especially on the reef-facing area where there's a solid substrate and a lot of waves. So I do agree with the last speaker that perhaps it doesn't need to be protected. And I have attended some workshops here in Saipan where they're, when they're talking about offshore aquaculture. Offshore aquaculture in Saipan would cover those blue areas. And so in the future, if they're going to establish aqua, marine aquaculture in the offshore area, it would be very difficult for them to remove or get exemptions from the national government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rehebe. Next, we're going to call on Mr. June Coleman.
Thank you again. I think part of me wants to just express, my name is June Coleman. I'm born in Hawaii, but have family here in Saipan. I was also raised here. And my comment on this is, you know, it's just kind of a reflection, more so like looking at where you guys all live in Honolulu and the damage that has occurred from all of the development, all of the building of... all of the building of, of canals and not, not taking into account the natural flow of the water, which I think for the most part here in Saipan, it's still pretty intact, I don't see too much, uh, you know, cement canals, some in the Garapan area, but, uh, yeah, those things, I think, need to be, part of the solution is looking at how the land is utilized and is it having a positive impact on the ocean areas? As far as this designation, I also kind of side with them to look at, you know, not just this particular thing, but look at the whole, all the, all of the ecosystems that surround these islands, and are those things being truly cared for and stewarded by the federal government? Or is it just something that looks good on paper? We know that the greatest negative impact to the environment is mankind. And who within humanity could do that kind of damage? Those are the things we need to look at. And I really appreciate that we have full access to these areas, as we should, but we also need to be responsible in stewarding and maintaining it for our future generations. And to have an active role amongst the youth, knowing about these things, about the different types of corals, is important. And to take kind of a active role in, in, um, in this kind of, echoing, you know, how people come from outside and, you know, try to advise you, instruct you on what to do, but it is important to have community input in all of these areas, because it is our, our home and our, and our oceans. It's where we live and, uh, one of the, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Uh, next, we're gonna call on Mr. James Kingman.
Good evening, my name's James Kingman, K-I-N-G-M-A-N. Um, my comments are in my individual capacity as a resident and, and guest on this beautiful island. Um, and also as, as an American who has a vested interest both in this place and in the general project of the federal government, though I'm not a part of the feds. I understand the hesitation of any additional federal regulation, any additional federal involvement and oversight in a local government. I'm from rural East Texas. Um, my work before coming here involved a lot with the marshalleys. There's been a long history of environmental destruction perpetrated by the federal government. However, things are much different now. And as much as there is a discussion of history that is sometimes centuries long about way things have been done wrong, I think it's important for the CNMI to look at itself and consider how good of a steward has, um, has the CNMI been of cultural and environmental obligations that it has, not just for itself, but for the world? In many cases, environmental obligations of being the home of an endangered species that might only exist on the CNMI, or a critically endangered habitat for a particular type of coral has ripple effects and ramifications. This is a tall order for a small community, a very small community. Most other places with this population are not given these sort of tasks, are not asked on behalf of all of humanity to protect something important, whether it's a historical and cultural element or a critical environmental element. And unfortunately, in many cases, it has not been a good steward. It doesn't mean that the federal government has always done it and got it right, but an increase in the amount of attention and steps and supervision and expertise on the way that the CNMI moves forward can only be good. And I, I respect and appreciate the public comments process, as opposed to being entirely top-down the way that many other central governments with outlying regions are. But I also, while respecting and appreciating the, the history and the problems that come with an outside, faraway decision-making structure coming to, to bear, there also should be a recognition of ways that it could be improved and the ways that the local government or the local system has, has fallen short. I, I don't know anything about specific types of species of coral, but I certainly hope that this increases the amount of awareness of the important place that the CNMI holds to America and to the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingman. Um, now we're gonna call on Mr. Vince Aldon. You're still here? Going once, twice, no? And Mr. Gary Sword, if you have a public comment?
Gary Sword, resident of CNMI. Just answering the question about who asked for this designation puts a spotlight on whether this designation is real or fake. Have we checked what they submitted is correct? Yes or no? It doesn't seem like it, because we're looking at all of the, the blue and it's, there's a lot of coral out there. And you're just picking on this nice little place in Tenapeque where our people like to go and fish and enjoy. Also, you know, you should look more about local autonomy instead of, I call your meetings parachute meetings. You just parachute in, do the meeting, then you take off again. But we still live here, and everything that you do, everything that you say affects us and our livelihood, our way of life. You know, it says, "The government of the United States will assist the government of the Northern Mariana Islands in its efforts to achieve progressively higher standard of living for its people as part of the American economic community and to develop economic resources needed to meet the financial responsibilities of local self-government." That's in Section 701 of the covenant between the United States and here. And right now, all we're seeing is that we're taking away the economic viability of having something great happen here in the CNMI. Um, I'm looking at that map. It looks like the turtle map we looked at six months ago, right Floyd? You, we were here, same map. Same places that they're gonna close out for the turtle, now you're gonna do it for the coral. What else you gonna do it for? The people? This year marks the 80th anniversary of the Battle of Saipan. And we still feel like we're taking bullets and bombs. We get bombarded by these public hearings. We get bombarded by regulations. We get bombarded by people from the outside. Maybe these people who asked for this designation haven't even been here. And yet they want us to live with this while they just go ahead and live their lives. It's wrong, very wrong, in every sense of the word. And it makes this covenant fall short of helping us be self-sufficient and self-governing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sword. Next, we're gonna call on Mr. Valentino Taissakian. If you're still here?
Mayor.
No? Mayor, nope. All right. Okay, we're gonna call on Mr. Gurley.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Uh, my name is John Gurley, and I'm gonna be submitting written comments on some of the technical issues, questions about incremental impact due to consultations, which I want to be very clear about. I was also going to address some of the other areas on like Pagan and Rota and Tinian that I was hoping that y'all could consider deleting critical habitat, current proposed critical habitat from those areas, because we've got existing infrastructure developments coming in at some point in the future. My comment tonight is strictly going to be on the process. And as you know, I, I've been somewhat critical of NIMPs and other federal agencies. I'm glad you're sitting down, but I've been involved in this since probably before 2020. And I've seen the process, and quite honestly, these processes, I've seen federal government come out here and walk all over us. And they've been doing it for years. And this is the first case that I've seen where y'all were listening. And if you compare the proposed rule, and I realize the 2020 proposed rule is three species, but, I mean, we, we eliminated two of them because of science. We got rid of the creating critical habitat in harbor areas that we knew is degraded waters, degraded habitat. I mean, I like the approach that y'all took on this. It is, we have come a far way, and thank you for listening. Uh, also would like to thank you for having public hearings on Tinian, Rota, and Saipan. Uh, we don't wanna leave anybody out. So I think, and I realize all this has more energy and more money, but we appreciate it, and I wanted to personally say thank you. Uh, and I'm gonna finish up with 43 seconds, Floyd. We currently working on the Green Sea Turtle habitat. Y'all have come a long way in working with the islanders. And the Green Sea Turtle, proposed critical habitat, as I believe Gary mentioned, is like the 2020. They took a broad brush and just circled the island. We had the governor of American Samoa write, y'all, about extending the public comment for the Green Sea Turtle. Our governor wrote you. From my understanding, we even haven't got, they have not got the courtesy of a response. And we have been told that, uh, we've been told, we have been told that there is not gonna be any extension of the public comment period. I would like to see NIMPs talk to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and follow this, see if you can, see if you can follow this approach, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. We have one more public comment. Oh, two more. And then we'll open it up to anyone else. Uh, so the next, we have Ms. Leana. Ms. Leana Hafschneider.
It's okay, it's always happens. Half a day, good evening, and I don't know if you guys have been here, but I assume you have. Welcome to Saipan. I hope you're enjoying your stay here. Anyways, I'm gonna not, I'm gonna send it in before the 25th, all the technicals, like they're saying. But I wanna emphasize, um, I was at Western Fisheries Management back in 2008, down on Richard Street at the YMCA on a council meeting, and NOAA sits there. In fact, some members are here, but they weren't there. There was 80 species proposed by a no-take-zone group out of New Mexico, if I'm not, if my memory is right. And 60 of those were listed as rare and only found in the Mariana Island archipelago. Um, I skipped my class at Manoa to actually stand there and talk about this. So I'm actually glad that I don't see some of those species, except I think three or two of that. Um, my concern is, and I, I will reiterate, is I need to know the updated results for NOAA. And if you don't mind, I would like to ask NOAA, and I have letters coming in, again, my name is, I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Leana Sablon-Hafschneider. I'm here as president of Matua Council for Native Chamor advancement. And I need an update on the status of the corals, because I don't see it listed, and I think I'm echoing some of the panel members that come up here, for NOAA. And NOAA, you know where NOAA is, right? Yes? Uh, I like to use that name, because FDM is colonial, you know? Uh, and also, I would like to see an update on the impact there, more on the corals. Uh, I, I would like to see NOAA do that. I've looked at your site, I haven't seen any update except 2017, I think. And I think that's, even the information is not too clear. It kinda cut off. Uh, but I wanna end this statement that our president, President Biden, had commemorated December 28, 2023, as the Endangered Species Act Day, when he signed the proclamation on December 27 on its 50th anniversary. So with that, there were languages in there that spoke about indigenous preservation of our indigenous environment. And one of the speakers here actually brought up a very important question. Are we, the CNMI, do our, being good stewards? No, we're not. We're very bad. We're horrible. So that, I want you, as NOAA, that actually, they say it's bottom-up, but it needs to be top-down when we're, when you're dealing with the CNMI. And thank you, and also did my reading comment, I appreciate it.
First of all, I'm a fellow of the New Zealand, uh, Chambora, Chambora. We advise our clients for the, for our management, and we're always to serve our very small, uh, government, our very small knowledge and, because from the Spanish border, probably, so, we're moving to water, since 69, over from one, all down to the other. And we're, uh, all the, in Serbia, and, uh, according to the, uh, Spanish border, the genocide, uh, so, we're coming from this, uh, incident, and we're still, uh, probably, uh, we're on the, you know? Anyway, this one, uh, coming, uh, my position is paying for, and it's horrible, for, for, you know, incident, you know, Chamoros, uh, the, the, uh, residents of the, of the, uh, the, uh, which, well, that, uh, many, uh, several, uh, from all of that, uh, that, uh, is, uh, so, who is, uh, uh, please? So, when I look at this, uh, horrible business, everything you see, as an indigenous person, uh, who's, uh, only, uh, here, uh, maybe, right, uh, NOAA, they, they see some sites, uh, others, uh, indigenous, and there's no, you know, videos in one place, in the rest, around the world. Uh, I see it in indigenous tents, it's like a problem, you know? Uh, for many years, uh, for, uh, the university, uh, and all of them, started, certainly, a lot of Tinian, before, uh, they stopped, uh, the, the projects, you know? And there's, they know, uh, we're still working on it. And, uh, but the, the, is, your goal, you know, as part of federal officials, you know, coming here from the, uh, the, uh, the usage report, and, uh, the, uh, rejected, uh, people, so, target, where I came, uh, the, uh, for my, uh, for the, and, uh, ensures that, hopefully, because I, uh, for indigenous, we're fighting, we're, uh, traditional, uh, traditional, uh, set, you know, in the, uh, in Gino. And you should put it to that, because Gino is conservation. So that's right.